Okay, if I could, I'll call our meeting to order. I apologize to those of you who have been waiting since 6 o'clock for our meeting to start. We had a little bit of a board training that we took place in a little bit earlier, so we're just getting started, so I apologize for that. The first item on our agenda is to call our meeting to order and establish the fact that we have a quorum. Even though we are kind of spread out, we do have a quorum of our board team with only Mr. Hernandez not being here this evening. So that's item one. Item two is our invocation. We're honored this evening to have Michelle Nichols, the children's coordinator at Word of Life Church, and she's going to lead us in our invocation. Thank you, Ms. Nichols, for being here.
Thank you for inviting me. If you'll bow your heads with me, let us pray. Heavenly Father, we come to you in faith and sincerity, knowing that you hear and you answer our prayers. We thank you that we can come boldly before your throne of grace, asking for your perfect will in all the things of our lives, personally and professionally. God, we know that the most important thing is to spend time with you every day so that we can hear your heart. We thank you for your provision and your protection, even just this last week, what we've been through. God, we thank you for ordering our steps, that all the issues that will be offered here for the first time today, to things that need to be further reviewed, will all be in accordance with your will and not our own. God, we thank you for your supernatural protection over each school campus that you've entrusted to this school board. God, I thank you that you have a hope and a future for each student, each teacher, and each employee at these schools. God, we know that we can trust you, we can believe you, and we can expect your promises to manifest. God, I ask you to bless each one that's here today, let there be unity, and let each one see others' viewpoints, that the appropriate agreements can come. God, we ask all of this in the mighty name of Jesus. Amen.
Thank you so much, Ms. Nichols. We appreciate you being here. Our next item, and I'll introduce these young ladies as they come forward, and we're going to do something a little bit different, since initially we just had one young lady here and we had two, the second one show up, and I promised them that I would stand with them while they led the pledges, but they're going to lead the pledges, not me. So we've got a couple of young ladies from San Angelo Elementary, that would be Emily Reyes and Camila Morales, so if they would come forward, I'll join them.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And Texas has a flag, I pledge allegiance to the unity of Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Okay. Let me read our script before we get too far along. I may have to get my glasses out. I'm not very prepared. Good evening and welcome. As the president of the Board of Trustees, the San Angelo Independent School District, I'd like to welcome all of you who are present at tonight's regular board meeting. I also welcome those of you who might be watching the tape of this meeting on our public access channel, Channel 4. We appreciate your interest in our students. All items that will be discussed at our meeting this evening have been posted as required by state law. Also, you may be aware, our board meets a minimum of two times per month, and most, if not all, the items on our agenda this evening have been previously discussed at an earlier pre-agenda board workshop. As members of the San Angelo Independent School District's Board of Trustees, we're here to set goals, listen to reports from our superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, and personnel appointments, and to make policy for the school district. Please keep in mind that our meeting is a meeting of the Board of Trustees held in the public and not a meeting of the public. However, with that in mind, we have an item on every one of our board meeting agendas that allows anyone present who wishes to speak an opportunity to do so. I will make certain that we will give an opportunity to speak on any item not listed on our agenda. Additionally, prior to taking any votes, I'll ask audience members if they would like to make any comments. Anyone wishing to make comments on any agenda item should do their best to limit their comments to five minutes. In compliance with Texas state law, these proceedings are recorded and will become a part of SAISD's permanent legal record. In order that the tape might adequately reflect the proceedings, I ask that you please refrain from talking while others might be speaking, and also, as I remind my fellow board team members, to please turn off or silence your cellphones at this particular time. Again, it's my pleasure to welcome you to tonight's meeting. Thank you for taking the time to be here with us. I appreciate your interest in the activities of our district and the business of our district and the activities of our students. So we'll move to item four, that's recognitions, and I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Wood and Mrs. Wood and Johnson as they do that.
I'm just going to note that it's Mrs. Turk now.
Thank you. So maybe I ought to change, someone ought to change that?
And I should have updated that. My apologies. Thank you and good evening, President Lehman, Dr. Detloff, and members of the board. As you all know, this past week, San Angelo community faced historic hazardous weather conditions and challenges, including power outages, busted pipes, and water issues. When much of our community was overwhelmed and stressed by the conditions, one team in particular at San Angelo ISD was answering the call to help. Our facilities and maintenance team, led by Mr. David Creek, braved the extremely cold temperatures, frigid conditions, around the clock, to help ensure that when we were ready, we would be able to welcome our students and staff safely back to our schools. We simply couldn't do recognitions tonight without recognizing their incredible contribution in this uniquely challenging year, and especially last week. I recall a specific evening last week where we were dealing with rolling power outages, but I was still somewhat comfortable with my baby under blankets, layers of blankets at my home. And at that time, Mr. Creek was sending reports to the leadership team live from a dark, wet campus where a pipe had busted. It was nearly midnight, and he and his team were there in the cold, working to prevent further damage and begin the cleanup process. And this was not a one-time occurrence. The dedicated team did not rest, tirelessly protecting our schools. And on top of that, this is when some of them were experiencing their own personal tragedies and stress. Then on Monday, after a week of particularly hard circumstances, to help our schools be able to open, Mr. Creek and his team amazingly pulled off securing nice restroom trailers on a short turnaround for our campuses still experiencing water pressure issues. They simply go above and beyond, and we are truly blessed, as a district, to have each and every one of them. His team includes the maintenance and grounds crews and our custodians, who have already stepped up tremendously in this COVID era. In conversation with Mr. Creek, he told me that his team all jumps in when in need in a time of crisis. We can certainly learn a lot from this past week and from the commitment of our facilities and maintenance team. Our people truly make a difference, especially in trying times. Please join me, our district and community, in recognizing the extra efforts and dedication of them tonight. At this time, I know he doesn't want to, but I ask that Mr. Creek comes forward so that he can accept a certificate on behalf of his team. Truly incredible, and seriously, countless and countless hours. We're so lucky. At this time, I'm going to pass it over to Mrs. Turk, so that she can talk about some of our outstanding students and a few of them we have here tonight.
Thank you, Whitney, and thank you and good evening, Mr. Lehman, Dr. Detloff, and members of the board. We are pleased to honor and recognize outstanding Central High School band and choir students who earned the prestigious honor of being named Texas All-State Musicians. This is the highest honor a Texas music student can receive. We know that participation in extracurricular programs like these impacts student success. The SAISD learner profile skills of communicating, collaborating, creating, and thinking flourish in these programs and events. All these skills help our students excel in becoming future-ready. Congratulations on your achievements and dedication to musical knowledge and skill. And thank you to our dedicated SAISD staff that generously give their time to help develop the talents of our students in these programs. These educators build great relationships with students and cultivate teamwork within their groups and programs. Let's begin with our Central High School choir. Mr. Landon Gilmore, Director of Choirs, will share the notable achievements of his students.
Thank you, board and administrators, for this opportunity to highlight some of our wonderful students, and thank you for the work that you've done this year to keep in-person instruction going and make it possible for us to still have electives and fine arts programs and sports, because we know that that's such an important reason why our students choose to come to school every day, so thank you for that. It's been a strange couple of weeks and certainly a strange year, but we are fortunate to have two All-State Choir members from CHS, and they're here with me tonight, Hayden Shelton and Elijah Jackson. So each fall, about 70,000 students across the state of Texas that are in high school begin the All-State Audition Process, and at the end of that, about 1,800 are named an All-State Musician, whether they're in one of the bands, choirs, mariachi groups, orchestras, jazz bands. There are 18 All-State Ensembles, and four of those are choirs. And so tonight, Hayden, if you'll come up first, I'll introduce you to our senior Hayden Shelton. He's a first tenor, so he sings the very highest of notes. He moved here last year from Idaho, I always have to add, which Idaho or Iowa? From Idaho, and in Idaho, he was a two-time National Association for Music Education National Honor Choir member. And then this year, he was named second chair at the region audition, and he was also second chair bass trombone, he's also a band student. And then in pre-area, which is our next round advancing towards state, he remained second chair. Is that right? No. I wrote that down. He was first chair at pre-area. And then at area, he was second chair overall, and areas where our competition is against like the whole northwest state of Texas. It's like divided into like five parts, and it's very geographically big, but he was named an All-State Mixed Choir, so that's the group that's the boys and the girls, and it's the top group for the state. Hayden's a senior, and he's planning on majoring in engineering next year. Congratulations, Hayden. And then next is Elijah Jackson, and then when we're done, we'll do y'all together. Elijah's a junior, this is his second year making the All-State Choir. He did that as a sophomore last year, and he placed first at region, and then at pre-area, he was second. So these two guys were flopping places there, fighting for the top spot. But then at area, again, against those other four regions, he placed fourth chair overall and was named to the All-State Tenor Bass Choir or the All-State Men's Choir. Changed the naming of that to allowing for other members of that choir. Elijah is still just a junior, but he is planning to go and study musical theater when he graduates.
Mr. Jason Jones, Director of Bands at Central High School, will now share the achievements of his students.
Good evening, everyone. It's a great pleasure to be here, and this is one of the most enjoyable things that I get to do as a band director, is to come recognize the accomplishments of, our individual accomplishments of our students. The All-State Band process, like Mr. Gilmore said, began very early, and so in the middle of marching season, our students began working on their all-region, their all-state music. And it's a process of just getting that going, and then once marching season is over, usually they have a chance to focus on it. This year was unique because football season went all the way, marching all the way up until the Christmas break started. So it was going on during all of that, which was different for them. So it required a different approach to practicing for our kids. And we had one student that advanced all the way to the All-State level. She, what, did you get second at region, I think? Yeah, she got second at the region process, and then at the area process, she got third chair. They take three. It's an interesting way that they do that. Every area, I think there's eight or nine areas across the state, well, they apportion the All-State seats based on the number of students that audition. So we don't have as many All-State chairs in our area as the people in the metro areas do, because we just don't have as many students out here. So it's harder to make the All-State group in Area A, our area, than it is for anybody else. So whereas some organizations have nine clarinets that will make it, we only have three. So you have to be the top of the top. And this year was unique, too, because the audition was recorded. It wasn't a go in the room and play in front of everybody, you had one shot. You had a five-day window to record, which on paper, that's like, yeah, that's great, I can get it exactly right. But for someone, especially like Lauren, who is a perfectionist, it's hard to go, I think I can do it better. Well, once you hit record to start over, it wipes out what you did before, and you have to do it all the way through. So I saw several of our students go through and go, I think I can do it better, and then it got worse, and like, oh, no, I can do it better, I can do it better. My own daughter went through the process, too, and it was over and over and over and over to try to get it right. But our All-State student was Lauren Ochoa. If you want to go ahead and come up here. Lauren is a sophomore. So Lauren plays the clarinet, and she is a sophomore. And if my research is correct, she's the first All-State Band student that Central's had since 2018. So this is a remarkable accomplishment. She made third chair, and we were all disappointed that we didn't get to have our convention where she get to go play with the All-State Band, but we're super proud of her. She is a hard worker, and the biggest difference between those students that make area and make region and make All-State is the amount of time they put in, especially over the Christmas break, when it goes, okay, you have about three weeks, and she worked her tail off, and she made the All-State Band. So I'm looking forward to standing here two more years as juniors and seniors to recognize her again.
Hayden Shelton, Elijah Jackson, and Lauren Ochoa, please join us at the front of the boardroom to be recognized. And Dr. Detloff, if I could, directors, join us as well. Thank you all so much, and congratulations again.
Thanks, Mr. Gilmore and Mr. Jones. We appreciate y'all very much.
It is our great privilege this evening to recognize three SAISD students who were selected for honors by the Three Rivers Counseling Association, with two receiving the Student Tribute Awards, and one was awarded a scholarship. The Student Tribute Awards and Student Scholarship are intended to highlight students who have overcome obstacles and shown courage, resilience, and determination. These students have overcome adversity in their lives to exhibit all the SAISD learner profile skills and be successful and progress academically. Please join me in congratulating our SAISD student award winners and scholarship participants who could not be with us this evening. Fifth grader Juliette Ramirez of Goliad Elementary, senior Sierra Holland of Lakeview High School. She also received the Student Tribute Award. And senior Malachi Brown of Central High School, scholarship recipient.
Just bear with us, we just have a lot of things we're very proud of tonight, and we want to recognize these amazing students. We are so proud also, though, to recognize three of our outstanding San Angelo ISD counselors who are honored as Counselors of the Year by Three Rivers Counseling Association this month. So we have congratulations to Veronica Mesa of Bowie Elementary. She was the winner of the George Plyler Elementary School Counselor of the Year Award. And then we have Celia Lewis of Glenn Middle School, winner of the Plyler Middle School Counselor of the Year Award. And we have Lonnie Webster of Central High School, winner of the George Plyler High School Counselor of the Year Award. It's dedicated staff like Ms. Mesa, Ms. Lewis, and Ms. Webster that exemplify how our people make the difference. I'll share a few excerpts from quotes about each of the counselors so you can get an idea of them. "Ms. Mesa is an amazing person and an intricate part of our Bowie family. She actively engages students and faculty in monthly recognition celebrations and advocates celebrating all the ways our students are smart. This has significantly impacted the culture on our campus." "Mrs. Lewis is a consistent source of patience and guidance on our campus. Her relationships with these students often provide a bright spot for the student in a difficult time in their lives. I have also seen Mrs. Lewis's work with students suffering in search of who they are. She is patient, kind, honest, and consistent in her messaging to them." "And Ms. Webster's love for her students and job is evident in her dedication and work ethic. When she visits with students about post-secondary plans, she is very detailed, thorough, and knowledgeable. She can guide them and help them with whatever questions they have. If a student comes in with a problem, she not only listens and talks to them about it, she helps them figure out ways to cope and work through it." We are so privileged to have these wonderful counselors on our team. Again, we've rescheduled a few times, so I apologize that they're not here with us tonight, but please join us in celebrating them. And finally, talking about an outstanding member on our team, I'd like to ask our executive director of athletics, Rodney Chant, to come up here to introduce our new Bobcat Head Football Coach and Athletic Coordinator.
Thank you, Whitney. I'll interject, as Coach Chant is making his way to the lectern there. I just want to add that we are extremely excited with the promotion of Kevin Crane as the Head Football Coach, Athletic Coordinator at Central High School. I'm going to talk briefly about the process involved, and then Rodney Chant, our executive director, is going to provide you some more details on Kevin's already stellar career and his work in SAISD as well. So the process initially started, we utilized a search firm, Dr. Curtis Colwell, who is the former superintendent in Lubbock ISD and former superintendent in Garland ISD, and he also was on the UIL, University Interscholastic League Committee, and served with them for 20 years. He is the premier person and go-to person in the state of Texas for athletic director and head coach searches across our state. The volleyball state championships and the wrestling state championships are held in a center bearing his name, the Curtis Colwell Center in Garland, Texas, and he comes highly acclaimed as a search firm to find the best potential candidates in such a process. I say that about Dr. Colwell because I want our public to know that we searched across our state, even dipped into some neighboring states, to find the absolute best possible candidate to replace Brent Davis at Central High School. We always say that the stump speech I always use, extracurricular activities are critical. You've seen a couple of our great kids and students tonight that have received accolades. Kids, students need to be involved in school, whether they're in extracurricular activities, whether it's speech, debate, choir, drill team, cheerleading. On the gridiron on Friday night, their graduation rates are higher, their GPAs are higher, and their attendance rates are higher when you were involved and connected in school, which is why this position is also critical for Central High School. So we are extremely excited about Kevin Crane receiving this position, and I just wanted the public to know that he comes highly vetted across the state. We had interest and conversations with individuals that were former coaches at the collegiate level. We had conversations with state championship coaches in the last three years, and we kept circling back to Coach Crane because of his connections with students. And so we are just extremely proud of Coach Crane, and I'm going to let Rodney Chant talk a little bit more specifically about his career up to this day. And let me add, as Coach Chant is up there, the Colwell Search Firm did a pretty good job because they did our athletic director search, and recently Rodney Chant was named the athletic director in the state of Texas, the one and only. So he received those accolades, and so that search firm did a pretty good job for us. So Kevin, Texas Coach of the Year, next year, we're ready. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Detloff. Kevin Crane is completing his 16th year as coach and his 12th year as offensive coordinator for the Central Bobcats. Along the way, Kevin has coached at Mule Shoe and Alice before coming here to San Angelo in 2009. Coach Crane is highly thought of throughout the coaching community due to his offensive mind and quarterback development. The Bobcats have reaped rewards on the field through their offensive output in qualifying for the playoffs 11 straight years. Because of Kevin's innovative mind, he has been fortunate to represent the Central Bobcats and San Angelo ISD as a speaker at coaching clinics throughout the state of Texas. Kevin has been nominated for numerous awards over the years, and the program did not miss a beat through his leadership in offseason when Coach Davis announced that he was leaving. We are excited with Kevin's plans for the future of the Bobcats, and it is with great pleasure, as the Athletic Director for San Angelo ISD, that I welcome our new Athletic Coordinator, Head Football Coach, Kevin Crane.
Kevin, I'm not going to say publicly that your spouse, keeping your spouse in SAISD was a big reason we hired you, but I won't say that on public record. So you may want to introduce her back there.
I've told her that several times. I said, one day I'm going to get a job, and it's because of you, because you do such a good job at your work. Thank you, Dr. Detloff and Coach Chant, I appreciate it, and I can't tell you how honored and privileged I am to be the 27th Head Football Coach at San Angelo Central. Central's played football, you know, for over 100 years, and I'm lucky to be the 27th coach here. It's truly a dream come true for me, and something that I've worked for and trained to do my whole life, and sorry I get emotional when I talk about it, but it's, I'm lucky to be here and get to do what I'm doing. But thank you, Dr. Detloff and SAISD Administration. I appreciate you guys so much. Board of Trustees, I appreciate you and the work that you've done to get us in school this year and keep us in school. I'd be remiss if I didn't thank Coach Davis. He, winning his head coach in Bobcat history, and he paved the way, and I believe truly that I wouldn't be here today if it wasn't for Coach Davis. So I appreciate him as well. To our current and former coaches, we've had a bunch of good ones. Since Coach Davis has been here, we've had eight coaches go off to be head coaches, athletic directors, under his leadership, and that was something that he was very proud of. Our current staff appreciate all of their hard work, and they do a great job for our students, day in and day out. To our current and former players, a lot of them have reached out to me, and I tell them, you know, if it wasn't for you guys, I wouldn't be here in this position that I'm in. There's too many to mention, but so many of them have impacted Bobcat football over the last 12 years, and I can't thank them enough. Our current players are working extremely hard, day in and day out, and preparing for season coming up, next year's season, so couldn't be prouder of them. Like Dr. Detloff mentioned, my wife, Ashley, who works here at SAISD, she's the elementary reading coordinator, literacy coordinator, excuse me. reading coordinator, literacy coordinator, excuse me. She works here and has worked here for 12 years as well, and we love San Angelo. It's home to us, and we have two little boys, Connor and Hudson, and you'll be seeing them at football games and running around, and they're a handful, but we love them. But I can tell you that we have three goals that we talk about, and every time you come to a game, every time you watch us play, I hope that you're able to see the things that we talk about every day. But number one, we want to be a team, all right? And we're going to be a team, and we're going to pull together, and we're going to truly care about each other, and we're going to be a team, and we're going to be... Number two, we're going to be the most excited team on the field every time we take the field, and I hope that people in the stands are able to see that, the excitement that our kids have to play the game of football, the game that they love so much. We're going to be the most excited team to play. And goal number three is we're going to be the best at doing our job, whatever our job is. We're going to work day in and day out to be the very best that we can be at our job. I can promise you that our kids work daily, and we're going to continue to work day in and day out. We're going to work every day to be a team and a program that San Angelo can be proud of. And again, I can't thank you, Dr. Detloff, Coach Chant, our administration, and our school board for allowing me this opportunity, and I appreciate it so much, very grateful and humbled. And I can tell you that today and every day is a great day to be a Bobcat, so I appreciate it very much.
Thank you. And Sycam Cat, I'll have to say, go Chiefs and Maydens, too.
Thank y'all for those recognitions, and thank you, students, for making the effort to be here. We really appreciate you and congratulate you all on your efforts, and I wish you the continued great success as y'all move forward. We appreciate y'all being here very much. Coach Crane, there's a lot that can be said about how qualified people are and the number of applicants that we have for the job, but I think what stood out most in your interview process was the character that you have, so we appreciate that, and we're looking forward to you continuing to build great young men and being associated with lots of young ladies as well on the campus at Central High School. Let's move forward with our agenda. Item five is our minutes. Do we have a motion to approve our minutes?
Vote for approval.
So we have a motion from Mr. Denton and a second from Mr. Gallegos to approve the minutes of our December 14, 2020 Regular Board Meeting. This is a revision that we needed to make, our January 11, 2021 Special Finance and Pre-Agenda Board Workshop, and our January 19, 2020 Regular Board Meeting. Do we have any questions or comments concerning our minutes? Do we have any public comment? If not, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Our motion passes. Our next item I mentioned earlier in the announcements I made, is item set aside for anyone wishing to speak to our board team on items not on our agenda this evening? Is there anyone wishing to come forward and speak on items not on our agenda? If not, we'll move forward to the report section of our meeting. We have a student enrollment report for the 21st Monday of school. We get this in our Friday facts each week, but our 21st Monday, we had 13,955 students enrolled, of which 2,321 in our Virtual Learning Academy, and this is, as we've talked about throughout the year, is a decrease of 526 students, so we're still hovering just above 500 students below where we were at this same time last year. Our next report is our average, third weeks, third six weeks' average daily attendance report, and that indicates that this time last year, our average daily attendance was 95.61%, which is outstanding for a school district this year with all the other things that are going on in the district, as well as normal sickness in addition to COVID and other issues. Our average daily attendance is 91.17%, so we're down 4.44% compared to this same time last year. That concludes those two reports. Our next is, Dr. Ritter's going to, I'm going to turn it over to her, and she's going to give us an update on academic progress.
Thank you, Mr. Lehman, Dr. Detloff, members of the board. This evening, we are fortunate to have with us for our academic report, John Tanner, who will be joining us, and I'm going to do a brief introduction for him here in a second. We have been working in our district for about four years with John and have really developed a great relationship with him through the work of building a community-based accountability system in our district, and he's guiding us through this work. Much of the work that we have done as we were selected as one of the original districts through, for the Texas Public Accountability Consortium, through TASSA, and the work at the state level, and we have continued that work. And what a community-based accountability system is, is something that we are very proud to say that through our learner profile and the work of our educator profile is, how are we really honoring all of the accomplishments of our students, and that things are not just limited only to one test score. It's looking at all of the achievements and accomplishments of our students, many of which you heard examples of tonight, and those are the things that make the experience in schools so rich and rewarding for students, but also that make a community so involved, and also those are the things that are important in a community as well. So a CBAS is a commitment by our district to create a meaningful school accountability that honors the hopes and dreams for our community, parents, staff, and students. Mr. Tanner has made a career out of examining the systems that have historically passed for accountability, as well as those that should support, that should. His support for grassroots efforts in Texas and Georgia based on his work has resulted in a set of practical frameworks and approaches that allow a school and district to convert to true accountability even without a policy change. That work is now rapidly expanding to other states and networks of schools. Brave Ed is the next iteration of a movement that John has long hoped to see come to light. Its purpose is to scale the work across the entire country. Brave Ed is John Tanner's work and with his work with true accountability and how he is helping districts to accomplish this. And he is working with several states. It now has expanded to 14 states that are represented that, you know, including many, including Texas. Texas is one of these states, Georgia, Mississippi, Pennsylvania, Kentucky, Indiana. Also in our own state, including the 60 T-PAC districts, he's doing very specific work along with San Angelo ISD, Frisco ISD, Fort Bend, Grapevine, Colleyville, Prosper, Victoria, to name a few. And so at this time, I'm going to ask that John come forward, and he's going to be speaking with you tonight about the components of true accountability and how we're building the community-based accountability system and the importance of CBAS in a district. So at this time, I'll turn it over to him. Thank you.
Thanks. Hi, thrilled to be here and appreciate very much the opportunity to talk about this. Ordinarily, when you hear the words, "We've got a guy coming to talk about accountability," you're not often the most popular guy in the room, and so I appreciate your willingness to really engage on this topic. For those of you who don't know me or my work or the work of my organization, we've spent the last 15 years observing how accountability works in effective organizations, and our intent, our objective, is to figure that out so that we can apply it to schools. I'm an educator and a testing person by training, but I got into testing because I was interested in accountability, not the other way around. And so one of the things that has come out of this research and come out of this work is we have a very clear sense of what the anatomy of accountability is. And that's what I just want to share with you tonight, just so that we start to generate a vocabulary and begin to talk about what feels very amorphous and feels very, can feel very large. I want to be able to have us talk about that in a very clear sort of way. And so one of the things that we frequently talk about as we try to define what accountability is, so that it isn't something that's mushy or squishy or something like that, is we always start with this notion that an accountable person is simply someone who offers a thorough accounting and then takes full responsibility for all the findings, both the good ones and the bad. There is no such thing as an organization that is a complete and abject failure. There is no such thing as an organization that is just doing everything well. Organizations are mixed bag. Every organization has some things where they're effective and other areas where they need to be more effective, and that's the proper kind of message that allows us to improve, not simply reductions to one size fits all. The neat thing about accountability is that there are only two forms of accountability that we can observe in organizations, and we have observed a lot of them. We can divide those into these two categories that you see on the screen. The institutional accountabilities, which are absolutely critical and important for being able to guide an organization and build it for the future. These are the organizations that, these are the accountabilities that exist in churches, in schools, in boards, in businesses, hospitals, et cetera. And these are the accountabilities that we use to plan for the future. These are the accountabilities that you use to make sure that we're prepared to deliver on the reason that our stakeholders want to be with us and have a relationship with. Second form of accountability is called a protectionist accountability. You're all very familiar with these. These are very prevalent in society, and they work really well for identifying and offering us some basic protection, so that while we try to make an organization great, we don't create problems. While we try to manufacture something, we don't pollute the air. While we try to run our organizations, we don't somehow create a larger set of problems. Very briefly, I'm going to talk about the institutional and the protectionist models, because I think it's very helpful when we're trying to think about school accountability and what school accountability ought to look like, to recognize how these two models work. And the institutional accountability, this is by far the most important of the two, because this is the one where we shape our organizations for the future. We try to become what we need to become. For those of you who are from the public and represented in the public tonight, think about the hopes and dreams that you have for the children in this community. Think about the hopes and dreams you have for your children. If you ask your kids, "What are your hopes and dreams for your education and as a result of school?", this starts to get at what we need to constantly be thinking of as we try to design our organizations for the future. There are four of these accountabilities. Very simply, they can be differentiated by the person with whom we need to be, have an accountable relationship. We have an accountability, this is a personal accountability, it's the accountability to ourselves for the quality of work that we... We have an accountability that is a professional accountability. That's the accountability to our peers and to our profession, to make sure that we're building a profession, being an active part of that. We have an internal accountability, you're all familiar with this one, everybody in this room has a boss, and that internal accountability is to make sure that we're making sufficient contributions to the mission of the organization and the direction that we're trying to. Now, the fourth accountability and the institutional accountabilities is really the most important one for this group. It's the organizational accountability. But the person or the persons with whom we're attempting to have that relationship of trust, with whom we're trying to build that relationship, represents the organization's stakeholders. That's a very unique role and a very important one to recognize, because the stakeholders of an organization are members of the group without whom the organization has no reason to exist. It really is that simple and straightforward. So if we're a hospital, it's the patients. If we're a business, it's our customers and our clients. If we're a school, that's our students. But as we talk about a lot, our students come to us when they're four and a half, five years old, can't make all the decisions by themselves, and so our parents play a very critical stakeholder role in that as well. And because schools serve such an integral part, or are such an integral part of a community, the community is also part of that stakeholder group as well. But the primary stakeholder are the members of a group without whom we lose our reason to exist, and that is an incredibly important accountability, because that's the accountability that represents the community and the folks in it. This accountability, first and foremost, is a forward-facing accountability. It's about the future. It's about looking forward. It's about trying to become the kind of organization that can deliver on those hopes and dreams for the kids. Some of them we're already delivering on in any organization, some of them we're not yet doing a good enough job. We need to be very clear about where that is and shape our organization so that it's capable of serving those needs going forward. The protectionist accountabilities are very different. These are not two sides to the same coin. These are not, "Let's do one for a while and then the other." These serve a very different type of function, and we all ought to be aware of that, and it's really important that we recognize this accountability, because when it's misused, it has all kinds of repercussions for organizations. These are imposed from outside. Government agencies generally say, "We need to protect people from dirty water and from unclean air, from bad drivers, through driver's licenses, through licensure programs, and so on." These provide a basic amount of protection to us broadly in society, but in doing so, they're very limited. They don't really care about the quality or the effectiveness of an organization. They just want to say that whatever your organization does while you do it, you don't create additional problems. You are all in organizations that have protectionist accountabilities that are part of those, whether you're a profession, a doctor, a lawyer, whatever profession you happen to be, and there are protectionist accountabilities that are operating. Like any accountability, these are high stakes. The institutional accountabilities could cost you your job, they could cost you your organization. They're very high stakes, and these are as well. These are designed to make sure that while you do your work, again, you don't create problems. But here's the really important thing that we've observed in these accountabilities. These are backwards-facing accountabilities, and that is an incredibly important thing to understand. And in these accountabilities, compliance is the goal, not excellence, not effectiveness, not being the best organization you can be. And here's why that's so critically important to understand. I'm skipping this slide here for just a minute. The very best way to be compliant is to repeat what you did the last time you were compliant. These kinds of accountabilities are not about encouraging or meaningful change. These are designed to discourage change, to make sure that you stand still in regards to these kinds of things, which is why we cannot have these kinds of accountabilities overreaching. We have examples where that's occurred, and it's always negative. It never results in an organization being more effective. So if you believe, for example, that schooling represents a failed institution and you want it to get better, this is not the kind of accountability that you would put in place in order to make it happen. This, in fact, would be the accountability that you would put in place if you wanted to not see meaningful change and to not see things move in a positive direction. Because if the very best way to be compliant tomorrow is to do what you did the last time you were compliant, and that compliance is referring to your entire organization, the very best way to make sure you don't improve is to not change, and that would clearly be an enormous step. We like to look at these two, and this is the last slide that I will share. We like to look at these two kinds of accountabilities, these two big families of accountabilities, in this way, and compare and contrast them so that, again, we don't get them mixed up and we don't create confusion. The protectionist accountability is a backwards-facing accountability. You need to think about that, think about driving a car, and you've got a rearview mirror and you have a tiny dot in that rearview mirror. That's a protectionist accountability. It's always in the past, it's always behind us, it's something we need to comply with or there are consequences, but it doesn't have anything to do with the effectiveness of our organization, getting better or improving. On the other hand, we have the institutional accountabilities, which are forward-facing, about getting ready to deliver on the benefits that kids and our stakeholders expect into the future. They're only about effectiveness, they're only about making sure our organizations are as great as they can possibly. I mentioned that it's dangerous to think that a protectionist model can somehow serve in the institutional accountabilities. An example that we give all the time, and we used it earlier, and I'll do it again, is the example of a doctor. All of us seem to believe that when we go to the doctor, we should be healthier as a result of once we leave, and that would be true. And research could be used to help us understand the degree to which that happens. But if we want to make a mess or a mockery of medicine, let's apply a protectionist model to that. Let's suggest that some percentage, let's say 70, that 70% of a doctor's patients have to get better, or the doctor can no longer practice medicine. Now, that seems on the surface a little bit reasonable. We expect to get better, that's rational, but here's the problem with trying to put a protectionist model on it. We will lose all of our ability to have an effective medical community. Number one, we will lose the chance to see best practice, because what becomes best practice is whatever gets you to the compliance threshold of 70%, even if it's bad for patients. We lose the chance to see our patients as our stakeholders, because now if we are right on the cusp of not quite making it and a very sick patient walks in, we're at risk of viewing that patient not as our stakeholder, but as a potential liability for our job. That's not medicine. But third, and here is the biggest... The third, and here is the biggest problem we have when we misuse the protectionist accountability, is that we're at risk of inventing the very problem we thought we were solving. Because if we eliminate the opportunity to see best practice, we eliminate the opportunity to get better. If we start viewing our stakeholders not as stakeholders, but as potential liabilities, we corrupt medicine. And in fact, medicine will get worse. It won't be as effective. It won't be as good at doing what it once did. And if that happens, we'll all be worse off for it. We will have invented a problem if it did not exist before. And if the problem did exist before, we've now eliminated our chance to actually solve it, because we're trying to do it with an accountability that isn't about making sure our organizations can be as great as they are. One of the things that encourages me about these new accountability conversations that we're having all across the country is we're starting to think about these accountabilities in this way. So what I hope you get out of this is, is an increased sense or a vocabulary that accountability is not some big, amorphous, strange thing. It has a very clear structure. It has two very clear forms, both of which are useful, both of which are in each organization. But if we don't build those institutional accountabilities, especially that organizational accountability, we're not going to be able to move our organizations to where we want to be. If you want an organization to be different, you have to be in the institutional accountabilities, or you're not going to see that. Thank you. Do you want questions? Is that, oh, thank you.
Thanks, John. We really appreciate you being here, and we've enjoyed working with you, and we're going to enjoy, continue to work with you. So thanks so much.
Congratulations on the great work. Thank you very much.
Okay. We have one final update, and Dr. Detloff's going to provide that for us, which is an update on Lone Star Middle School on a number of different levels. So I'll turn it over to Dr. Detloff.
Mr. Lehman and board members, we are in the final chapters, final pages perhaps, of our process. So just as a recap, at our regular board meeting on October 19th, action was taken to retire the name of Robert E. Lee Middle School after an extensive process to gather community input and thoroughly researched the topic. This evening, our process has culminated in a mascot being chosen by our student body. I want to publicly thank our board of trustees for initiating this extended and transparent process, and it's almost been eight months now since we started, earlier at the very end of June and July, and to engage our community in this important endeavor. In January, all current Lee Middle School students were able to nominate potential mascots for Lone Star Middle School. A student advisory group narrowed the list of mascot names and arrived at the Lone Star Texans. And we may have that image, there we go, so you can see the Lone Star Texans image. Ms. LaMaster, principal of Lone Star Middle School, indicated there was overwhelming support and genuine excitement for the new mascot and branding. I also would like to add that on the logo design, our very own camera person and digital guru, Jack Wilcox, designed this. So we did that in-house, so amazing. So thank you for that, Jack. And also, although the Longhorn, I'm very glad of this, actually, that the Longhorn looks a little menacing and confident. In the middle school where I grew up, our mascot was the kittens, since our high school mascot was the tiger. And I can promise you, it was hard to generate a lot of enthusiasm running out on the field as a mighty kitten. So I'm very pleased with this selection and graphic. Also, our student advisory group is currently working on the school pledge. On the next slide, you'll see the mosaic we wanted to preserve to properly chronicle the historical timeline for the initial naming of Lee Middle School, and then also including our current transition to Lone Star Middle School. And as we recognize David Creek and his crew, they did an amazing job, really, for taking this mural mosaic down, piece by piece, and reassembling it in the library at Lone Star Middle School. So an incredible job. And this area will be a place to house artifacts, memorabilia, and it really will chronicle the timeline, even with the previous newspaper clippings, current newspaper clippings about the process and the naming, just to really provide a great pictorial history, listing artifacts as well to chronicle this. So I'm excited about the new library area for Lone Star Middle School. Finally, I wanted to circle back and provide an estimated cost projection. Our school uniforms and school athletic uniforms and other uniforms make up a significant portion of the cost. Let me remind our board team that we are on basically a two-year cycle for athletic uniforms. Because of this, these costs, the majority of costs that we've experienced or will experience, will be done anyway, probably next year, as we complete those two-year cycles for middle school uniforms. So the uniforms make up a significant portion of the cost. They'll be ordered in early March. We were scheduled to order them about two weeks ago, but Mother Nature intervened. And currently, we're tracking to spend approximately $102,000, $102,068 on the renaming of the school. If we take into consideration the scope of this project encompassing our entire community, including approximately 20 opportunities were provided for our public to have, to express their opinion, including board meetings, summits, a community survey, and we believe these additional dollars were well-spent, because this is a 70-year decision on the renaming process. In fact, we have received numerous commendations from educational organizations, local and elected officials across our state, and other school districts due to the open and transparent approach our board took during the last eight months. So Mr. Lehman, as I return to my seat, I'll turn it back to you and our board of trustees for any additional comments.
Thanks, Dr. Detloff. Any questions or comments from our board team? Mr. Parker, looks like he wants to say something.
Well, I just, I don't think you mentioned it, but out of the 102,000, about 65,000 or so would be for the uniforms?
Sir, that's correct.
So 35,000 or 37,000 would be really but new cost. We would have been, in other words, for those that would say, "That's 102,000, you could have applied to something academics or something like that." 65,000 of that was going to be applied to uniforms within the next two years anyway.
At least, and even with a marquee as well. So a majority of those costs, at this point, we would utilize next year as well.
Yeah, and I might add that, you know, as Dr. Detloff mentioned, that's total cost. That's the cost of having a number of public forums, you know, all that type of stuff is included in that cost. So that's what we, what we spent. Okay, let's move forward with our consent items. Do we have a motion to approve consent items A through C?
Motion to approve consent items A through C?
Second. We have a motion from Dr. Kingman and a second from Mr. Parker to approve our consent items. We did have our donations on the board. We appreciate the donations to the district. That's item A. Item B is to consider Boys and Girls Club of San Angelo's Incorporated lease agreement. That's an agreement that Dr. McFarland brought to us. We'd had a number of opportunities through the years to work in conjunction with the Boys and Girls Clubs of San Angelo, but we really didn't have a very good contract with those folks. So Dr. McFarland worked on that for us, and we reviewed that at our pre-agenda board workshop. And item C is to consider the purchase of school buses. These are buses that Mr. Ketchum reminded us that we need to continue to upgrade and update our bus fleet, and those are, those are things that were part of our budget for this year. So do we have any questions or comments concerning our consent items? Any public comment? If not, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, any opposed, indicate by saying no. Thank you. Our next item is item nine, consider bid number 21-004. And this is a pretty exciting program that we're initiating, and that's a transportation rider checking in, and Mr. Henry's going to lead us off with that.
Thank you all for having me here tonight. Currently, the Transportation Department does not have an electronic rider check-in system. In coordination with the Transportation Department, an RFP was advertised and sent to nine different vendors on the buy board. In this proposal, we asked for a monitoring software, all-needed hardware, and a turnkey installation. We received one quality bid for this software. Secured Mobility LLC not only met our requirements, but also offered live status reports for parents, pre- and post-trip check-ins, state reporting, and turn-by-turn routing information. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to Jason Ketchum, the Director of Transportation, to give you a little more information.
Good evening, Mr. President, board members, Dr. Detloff. Thank you for allowing us to be here tonight. I just want to take a few minutes just to, or share with you, imagine for just a second, most of us all in here are parents, our children have all been school-aged at one time or another. As a parent, one of the most, or I know at least for me, is that when my kids were little, if they were, if they were in a place or showed up in a place where I wasn't expecting them to be, or if I turned around and they weren't right where I thought they were, it sent me into a panic. I mean, a total, total panic. You know, imagine for just a second, you know, the, our kid, I'll use my son as an example. My son, you know, he's a 10-year-old, and he does what most 10-year-old boys do. He's really active in being with his friends and stuff. But he doesn't always do what I expect him to do or necessarily what I want him to do. My son has, has gone off with his friends, for example, and not, not think about telling me that he was going to be with his friends. And so, you know, I'm looking around the house and, or trying to go all over the place trying to find him, but he, he just went, went over with his friends. That same scenario happens a lot, even in transportation. Kids get on, kids will go to school, they will, they will hang out with their friends, they will, they will decide all of a sudden that they want to go home with a friend. You know, so, so, so little Johnny, you know, mom and dad expecting him to be home and ride the bus home, you know, goes, decides to go with his best friend and, and end up, you know, end up somewhere, somewhere else. We, we don't, you know, that's a, that's a, that's a real scenario, and a scenario we deal with, we've even dealt with this, this year, about a kid getting on a bus or going home with a friend, not letting parents know. And, and, and we had to get police involved to help find, find the kid. It was, it was just a real scary time while we, while we were doing that. The kid, you know, this kid found, the kid was found just fine and, and no harm, but in that process, so there was a lot of, a lot of people who was, who were worried, not only were the parents worried, but, but the administrators were worried. We, we, as a Transportation Department, were worried because we, there's this kid that's lost, and we don't know where, where the kid is. The, the, our drivers, our drivers do a good job of trying to keep, you know, seating charts and try to keep up with, with the kids. But there's still room for error. There, you know, when you get, when you're loading, when you're getting 40 kids on at one, one place, a kid might slip by with the driver not, not catching that kid. And then we have, we have the same scenario where that kid gets on a bus and we're not exactly sure where the, where the kid is. And it takes, you know, it takes a lot of time to go back and look at video, and which we do, and we're, and we're happy to do that, but still, it takes time, and we have, we have, we have parents that are, that are worried. But the system that we're talking about, it will help us do away with that. It will help, it will help for us to know when a kid gets on our buses instantly. We'll be, the campus administrators will be able to look and know a kid's on a bus. We, as a Transportation Department, will be able to know the kids on the bus, will be able to know where they got on the bus, where they got off the bus, and even be able to know for sure where the kid is. And parents, you know, parents will actually have the access too. A parent will be able to look at their, their app, an app on their phone, and be able to see, like, little Johnny got on the bus at 3:05, the bus is 10 minutes away from stop, so little Johnny's going to be home, you know, 3:15. And it's just, it's a big, big ease of mind. I just wanted to, to share that with you for just a second, but I'm going to let Mr. Brett Taylor talk to you. He's a, he's with SmartTag, and he's going to get more, more in depth. But I just want to kind of give you, give you that little scenario. So, Mr. Taylor?
Good evening. Hope you all are doing well. Thank you so much for allowing me to come before you remotely. We had intended on being there in person, but because of the things that had happened this last week, we had a lot to deal with. So I really do appreciate you all being gracious enough to allow us just to meet with you remotely like this. I wasn't sure if we were going to actually show you a presentation, or if you just wanted me to go ahead and expound on what Mr. Ketchum had stated. Just briefly, our system, in fact, I even have a kind of a setup next to me, so I can even show you what it looks like when a student will tag on the bus. But exactly the points that Mr. Ketchum was making as far as not knowing what students were at any given time, that's been the challenge in transportation for, since transportation began. In fact, I was actually a school bus driver and ran into those scenarios, and that was the whole reason why we came up with this system. So SmartTag, we're proud to say was the very first onboard tablet solution in the country back in 2013. We have about 70 school districts that have our system. Every single school district that has purchased our system has kept our system. Over the years, we have not had one school district that left our system, but we have had other districts that purchased other systems turn around and leave that system and purchase ours. And so, we're, we're very happy with that. We are local here in Texas. We're in Georgetown, Texas, so we are kind of homegrown in that respect. We do value our relationships with school districts, but the most important thing is exactly what Mr. Ketchum was explaining, is just knowing where those students are at. I've been, as a parent, been in that same situation, not knowing where, I've got three kids, and I had two boys that were very rambunctious, and half the time, they're running off someplace. But with our system, it not only will let a parent know when a, their child or student gets on a bus, what location, what time, and where they get off, our system will actually prevent or make the driver aware if a student is attempting to get on the wrong bus or attempting to get off at the wrong stop. And that way, it just becomes a very important security measure for students. It gives parents the visibility, it gives campuses the visibility. We equip the Transportation Department with a lot of automated processes that they don't have available today. There is state reporting that's required, and we automate that process for the Transportation Department. So our system is, we believe the best that there is in the country, certainly the first in the country, and our commitment to San Angelo ISD, if the board were to approve our system, as it is with every single school district that we partner with, is to continue to make our system the very best that it is. We always listen to input. If there is something that can be adjusted or added to our system to help your operations, then we are glad to do that. We have multiple cycles where we do that throughout the year. So let me just do this real quick. I do happen to have, I'm going to point this over, see if you can actually see this. So this is what the tablet was look like when I had the pleasure of being there a couple of weeks ago, and I was able to show you this slide. But I'm just going to show you, this is what the tablet looks like that's on the school bus. This is the card reader that the students would have. Students are issued a card, and all they do is just present it to the card reader, and then on the tablet, I don't know if you can see that very well or not, but the student's photo and name comes up, and it's telling that bus driver that these students are allowed to get on that bus. And this would be an example of a student that's not assigned or authorized to get on a bus. So that lets the driver know that that student is not allowed, and so I can override that if that student had permission for the day, but if not, I just tap that, I'm not going to load that student. And then it's the same process when And then it's the same process when they get off the bus, the student just tag off. And that way, we ensure that they're getting off at the correct stop. We also have certain patented features with our system that no other system will be able to offer. One of those is, it's a great feature because it helps to ensure that pre-K students or whatever grade students that you require, when they get to their stop in the afternoon and they go to scan off the bus, the driver will be presented with a prompt that tells them that this student requires a parent or guardian to be at that stop. And we'll list who those authorized parents or guardians are. So everything about our system is about safety and security for students first and foremost. It's also very geared to be a tool that makes it very easy for a bus driver to do, perform their job at their highest ability, as well as keeping in mind all the processes and all the challenges that the transportation department deals with on a daily basis in trying to ensure that we address those and help the transportation department to excel at the great responsibility that they have. So that's kind of it in a nutshell. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them for you. If you wanted to see this slide presentation again, I can show that to you. You all just let me know what would you like.
Thank you, I appreciate that very much. And as we discussed earlier and part of my announcement, we have reviewed this and we did that a couple of weeks ago at our pre-agenda board workshop. So I think all the board team's pretty familiar with your product and what we're about to vote on. So I would ask the board team if they have any questions. If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I just had one question.
Go ahead, Gerard.
One question. When a student's denied access on the bus, does it also show what bus he should be on?
Yes, so for the afternoon, we'll say that the buses are lined up at their campus, whether it's elementary, middle school, or high school. If a student tags on the bus and it tells the bus driver, "Wrong bus," it will actually list the correct bus that that student is assigned to, as long as they actually have an assignment. So, yeah, we did think about that, that's a great question. We thought it was important to equip the driver to know how to best address that student and let them know, you know, "Sorry Johnny, you're on bus two and that's two more buses up in front of you. You just go hop on that bus and that's the correct bus for you." So we do display that.
Good, thank you.
Good question, Gerard. Other questions?
I just had a comment that I wanted to add.
Ms. Mizelle Flint, go ahead.
So I've actually been thinking about this for the past two weeks now since we've had so much time. And I'm really excited as the parent of a band student, so my kids don't ride the buses every day, but they are on the buses for band. And so they go, you know, to wherever, three, four, or five hours away sometimes. And I'm really excited to know that at, you know, 1 o'clock in the morning, I can look at my phone and see where they are. And so, in addition to the daily necessity for this, I'm excited for the extracurricular kids too.
Thanks, Amy. I agree, it gives us an opportunity to know exactly where everyone is and when to expect them to arrive, you know, which is a big deal when you're up waiting at 1 o'clock or 2 o'clock in the morning, or when we were going to Dallas at 3 o'clock in the morning. So, other questions or comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
A move that we approve, administration's recommendation for the purchase of a Secured Mobility SmartTag software with the all-needed, with all the needed software and installation for a turnkey project. We learned two weeks ago that that would be a total cost of $214,286.43, which includes full implementation, installation, hardware and software.
Thanks, Max. Do we have a second?
A second.
Thanks, Amy. So we have a motion from Mr. Parker and a second from Ms. Mizelle Flint to approve the purchase of Secured Mobility SmartTag software. And also as part of that bid, there's a, as we talked about last week, there's a reoccurring cost, maintenance fee of, annual maintenance fee of $22,233.60, I believe. But that would be applicable next year, not this year. So any other board questions or comments? Public comment? Yes, come forward if you don't mind. Thank you for being here. Please let us know who you are. I know, but go ahead.
I'm Chris Girrow. The question that I would have would be, you say it's a $22,000 some odd dollar per year cost for the system, but what about the cost for the cards that you're going to have to purchase year over year for the students that have lost them or the new students that come on, students that don't know where they are? And I have a second question. You have students that are going to be riding the bus that don't normally ride the bus, like for band and choir and things like that. What happens when one of them, it's time to go, get on the bus, "I don't have my card"? So how does that person get on the bus to make it to the football game or wherever they're going?
Okay, so two questions, lost pass or not having one at all, correct?
Sure.
Okay, and I'll let, go ahead if you'll cover that for us if you don't mind. Jason?
Yes, sir. So, so part of that is that once the driver has the ability to override the system, if a kid does not, or if a kid does not have a card, the driver, the driver with a few taps can put the kid's name in and show that they're on that bus. So the driver can't actually, can't physically put the kid's name in. And then, as of every year, we would come up with a system where the cards themselves, they're, you know, they're, oh, sorry, they're the plastic ID cards in that they should, you know, they can last for years. They have kids lose them, then we would have, we would have more to replace that. Now, one thing that we haven't decided and we will have to look at this more is that some districts, they, like they, like with the system, like they put a limit like on the number of cards a kid can get in a year. So if a kid lost their ID three different times, then the district may, our district start charging a little bit for, to replace a card. So that may be something we would address, but we would initially try to get enough cards that we have extras at the campuses.
And Mr. Ketchum, just correct me if I'm wrong, but we discussed, it was two weeks ago, using these cards as student, our student ID cards to create some of that cost, be part of our recurring cost that we're already using for student ID cards?
Yes.
And put a barcode on them, is that?
And then, right, barcode, we can print barcodes on the back of them, they could be used for other, in the cafeteria, other systems as well.
Okay. Thanks for your answer to those questions, I think that covers it. Other questions? If not all in favor of our motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, any opposed, indicate by saying no. Thank you for that. Our next item's item 10, consider bills and accounts and financial statements for the month of January 2021. Do we have a motion to approve?
Move for approval of those statements for January 2021.
Second?
So we have a motion from Mr. Dindel and a slow second from Dr. Kingman. Do we have any comments or questions from our board team concerning our bills, accounts and financial statements for the month of January 2021?
Mr. Lehman, just for those watching on Channel 4, we reviewed all these reports in detail at our pre-agenda meeting a couple of weeks ago. And these reports can also be found online, seisd.org under Financial Responsibility.
Thanks, Mr. Dindel, for that reminder. Any other questions or comments? Any public comment? If not all in favor of our motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, any opposed, indicate by saying no. Our next item's to consider a proposed amendment to the district's official budget in our Child Nutrition Fund, and Dr. McFarland's going to briefly discuss that with us. Thanks for being here, Dr. McFarland.
Yes, sir, Mr. Lehman, Dr. Detloff, members of the board. That budget amendment that's before you, as you realize as a board, you adopt budgets at the beginning of the year for the general fund and the Child Nutrition Fund. And so as part of that, what's come before you now, when we adopted at the beginning of this fiscal year, we transferred, part of that adoption was going to be a transfer of funds from the general fund to the Child Nutrition Fund because we anticipated that one to be short because they had gone through their fund balance pretty much completely when they had the COVID time hit and we weren't feeding the number of kids that we were and not getting in the revenue, the amount of revenue that they were anticipating through the spring. So they ate pretty much through their fund balance. What this is before you now is when the district closed down the Head Start program and that turned over to a partnership with COG, they were left with a fund balance in there and the district was unaware of what to do with that. And so we continually got, were seeking feedback from the USDA, US Department of Agriculture, who oversees those funds for Head Start programs. And we finally got the okay to say, yes, those funds can be transferred to your regular Child Nutrition Fund. So that's where that additional $95,155 is going to help benefit our Child Nutrition Fund that was at a $225,000 deficit that we adopted at the beginning of the year when we were transferring funds from the general fund. So that will be of an additional help there.
Thank you. So this will help offset a portion of that loss anyway?
Yes, sir.
Other questions, Dr. Kingman?
So money we moved out of the general fund on paper to the Child, or Food Nutrition Fund?
Yes, sir.
We can move that back to the general fund or no?
It'll be very similar, you know, as we go through the year. We don't move money until the end, until we see that all funds have been spent and expenditures and then we'll move the remaining of its needs.
We can recapture that into our general fund.
Yes, sir.
Thanks, Dr. Kingman, good question. Assuming we have a balance to move.
Yes, sir.
Not like we did last year. So, other questions? If not, do we have a motion yet? I'll entertain a motion to approve. I'll make that motion that we approve the Child Nutrition Fund budget amendment for February 16th, 2021, or actually today, the 23rd, with an increase in revenue and expenditures in the amount of $95,155.55. Do we have a second?
Second.
So we have a motion from Mr. Lehman, a second from Mr. Dindel. Any further comments or questions? Any public comment? If not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, any opposed, indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. Next, we have Consider Bid Number 21-001, this is Career Readiness Software, Mr. Henry.
During the review process, our current, sorry, during the review process of current software used by the CTE department, it was identified the need to upgrade the current Career Readiness Software program. In coordination with the CTE department, an RFP was created for a highly engaging online software program to prepare students for future success. The awarded software shall offer two-way integration of data with e-school, local workforce integration, and personalized student portfolios. We received five quality bids for this software. The scoring criteria was applied and Zelo received the highest score. This time, I'm going to bring Roxanne up here to explain what exactly all this is.
That's the way to pass the buck, Jason. Thanks, Roxanne, for being here with us, we appreciate it. I know you did this two weeks ago, so we appreciate you being back.
Thank you for having me. Dr. Lehman, Dr. Detloff, members of the board, I'm excited to share with you some more information about the College and Career Readiness Program, Zelo. We began looking at increasing the career and college readiness program that we currently had to be able to offer some additional options, not only for students but also for counselors and for our educators and for our CTE department. Some of the things that we were looking for that were important to us, of course, like Mr. Henry mentioned, was the two-way data integration with e-school, which is our student information system, eliminating the paper administrative work that we currently do when we're working with students in creating their four-year plans and their course selections, eliminating language barriers and for creating future goals for students, being able to have career exploration and social emotional learning curriculum to support students that are in our career pathways courses, to assist them with endorsement selection. And we, of course, wanted a company that had a strong reputation and had been providing these services for many years. In looking at the different stakeholder groups that would benefit from this, it was important that we were able to track students who were on and off track for graduation, making sure that those students were graduating on time. We wanted to support eighth graders in their endorsement selection and also their course planning to improve parent engagement in that process. We wanted to elevate our CTE programs of study, increase our industry-based certifications for students, forecast endorsements, promote our CTE programs to our middle school students so that whenever they came into our high school, they knew what programs and courses were available to them, to secure Perkins Five funding for this software program, to develop high-quality CCMR curriculum, and to really support a smooth transition for all of our students into secondary education. Technology capabilities were an important consideration when we were looking at the program, making sure that it was accessible and user-friendly regardless of the user's ability. We wanted to make sure that it would fully integrate with our current e-school system for data that was synced and having that single sign-on option and that it would work flawlessly on any device, whether it was a student's mobile phone, a Chromebook, a laptop or a desktop. We wanted to make sure that the program was student-centered and the two-way integration, being able to work with e-school so that students could make choices and that those choices were around their interests rather than just having a curriculum program where students just checked boxes and moved on. This program is designed to support students in Texas, so it's not just a one-size-fits-all. It is applicable to our state standards. And we feel that Zelo is the partner that's going to help us achieve these goals that we have set. Skip over one slide to go here. I thought this was interesting information to actually see how students are utilizing Zelo even outside of the classroom. And so you can see there the number of logins and the logins outside of school hours. And I do have a video that I can share with you if we have time. If not, I'll be sure to provide that link to you so that you can actually see the interface. You'll notice that it looks a lot like a social media account that students would be familiar with, and I think that's one of the reasons why they have such success in that percentage of logins even when students aren't in school. Zelo does have a 25-year track record, so they have done this before. There are over 3,500 districts and 9 million students and educators that are currently using the Zelo curriculum and career preparation software to achieve future readiness. And I do believe that this would be a good program for the students of SEISD.
Thank you for that presentation. Questions or comments? Anyone? Okay, we saw this, we made you come back, so we appreciate you being here and your patience.
I'm glad, thank you.
For coming back and, you know, we think this is great news for the district and we wanted to share it with those who might be watching us on Channel 4. So I would entertain a motion to approve Zelo Career Readiness Software program.
Move for approval of the purchase of Zelo for the future use as our Career Readiness Software program. CTE Perkins Grants funds will be used for this purchase and it's got a two-year total cost of $69,436, which will include the full implementation and the software.
Second?
Thanks, Mr. Dindel. So we have a motion from Mr. Dindel and a second from Mr. Gallegos to approve the purchase of Zelo software. Do we have any other questions or comments from our board team? Any public comment? If not all in favor of our motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, any opposed, indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. Next item's item 13, I have Dr. Ritter's name on this, but approval of innovative courses for middle school and high school. name on this, but approval of innovative courses for middle school and high school. I think she's going to pass the buck on this one, too.
I might be doing that. I believe that you were able to hear some of this from Dr. Candy Callis, who is our Director of Secondary Cricket Land Instruction. And I just wanted to preface this by saying that I know that the secondary CNI team have worked diligently and also Roxanne Fintriss, who is the Director of CTE, is also involved in a lot of this as well. And so as we develop our programs of study for our CTE courses to allow for our students to have a more individualized program of study for their interests and to help them just to be more successful in school. And we're just excited about this. So these innovative courses that Dr. Callis is going to describe tonight, follow along in our programs of study and the programs that we will be offering in the district for the upcoming school year.
Thank you. Dr. Callis, the baton's been passed to you.
Good evening, Mr. Lehman, members of the board. Dr. Detloff, thank you so much for having me. As Dr. Ritter said, many of the courses that you are looking at tonight for approval are a part of the changes that we are going to be making in our CTE career and technical education programs of study and what we're able to offer our students here in SAISD. We've talked a lot about this as a team and with our counselors and principals recently. And one of the things that I think is really important for our community to understand is our career and technical education courses are not what they used to be. It's not the typical old vocational-only focused programs. You know, we have courses for students who are interested in becoming doctors or interested in becoming lawyers. We obviously still have courses for our students who want to be, you know, welders and mechanics and things like that, but the scope is much broader now. And so at many, some of these courses really do fit those paths. So the courses that you are looking to approve, the first is General Employability Skills. It's an innovative course that serves special education students and really helps them with the transition for after, after high school. And so that will help them be more prepared upon graduation. The second is Student Leadership, which is a course that we are using for our student council students where they're able to build those leadership skills. The next are Introduction to Engineering Design and Engineering Design and Development. These are courses, CTE courses, which are a part of the STEM Program of Study. And the next two are Peer Assistance for Students with Disabilities 1 and 2. These are also courses that we're going to offer for our student council students where they will be able to, again, provide some of those mentorship and leadership opportunities on campus and be able to serve some of our students in the classrooms. We're also going to be offering, this one has a long name, Occupational Safety and Environmental Technology 1, 2, and 3. These are also course, innovative courses that we are going to be offering to help our special education students really build those skills that many of them utilize upon graduation. We are going to be offering, hopefully, Sports and Entertainment Marketing and Entrepreneurship. Those are both a part of the Business, Marketing, and Finance Program of Study. So any of our students who are interested in owning their own business or becoming, you know, a marketing professional, professional, these would be applicable to those students. We also would like to add Foundations of Restaurant Management. This is a part of the Hospitality and Tourism Program of Study. Really, this one, we're kind of beefing up what we were able to offer culinary arts previously, but we want to give some more options to students. We also would like to add Principles of Community Service. This is a part of the Human Services Program of Study. When Roxanne and I were working and meeting with high school principals on possible options, the students, we were able to gather some initial data. And this, this is the introductory level course to what, like a counseling and mental health pathway within Human Services Program, the Human Services Program of Study. The initial data that Roxanne was able to gather without even having Zello, she's great, there were so many students who were interested in this pathway. So I think this is going to be a really great addition. And then the final one is Advanced Floral Design. This is a part of our Agricultural Program of Study and Plant Science Pathway. This is just so that our students who are currently in those floral design courses can continue their work in the advanced course. So that is all of the courses listed and a brief description of them.
Thanks, Dr. Callis. Any questions from anyone? Again, we all saw these a couple of weeks ago. I think we're really excited. As you mentioned, it kind of broadens our course offerings for many of our students and kind of takes us a little bit away from traditional type CTE courses to other types of programs. So we appreciate this.
Absolutely.
Other questions or comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve the innovative courses for middle school and high school is outlined in the board of book.
Second.
So we have a motion from Dr. Kingman and a second from Mr. Parker. Further comments or questions from our board team? Any public comment? If not, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Again, Dr. Callis, thank you for your patience this evening. Our next item is to consider Tasby Board Policy Update 116. I know Ms. Holland's really excited to be here.
I am. Thank you very much.
We appreciate you being here.
Dr. Detloff, Tasby Policy Services issued update 116. There are five local policies that Tasby aligned with update legal policies, updated legal policies, and make recommendations to districts regarding local policies. Districts review those policies and make recommendations to the board. Our first policy is CQB Local. All of these policies really have wordsmithing changes. There's no major changes in any of them. But CQB Local is under Technology Resources Cybersecurity. And what it does is it delegates responsibility of choosing cybersecurity training program to be completed by employees to the superintendent. And right now, our program that we use is Edge a Hero through Region 15 that we've done this past year. And yes. The next policy, and there's two of them, DCD Local, DCE Local, which is Employee, Employment Practices, At-Will Employment, Other Types of Contracts. It outlines the process for an at-will employee or a non-Chapter 21 contract employee, which would be like a JROTC instructor, whose contract is not reissued, would follow the grievance policy in DGBA before the grievance goes before the board. Again, it's just wordsmithing. They really didn't change anything in there. FFA Local, Wellness and Health Services, Medical Treatment, and they just condensed this. That one looks like it's one that had been changed the most. But every year, we, parents that, students that have medication or whatever, they have to fill out a medical plan if there's medication or whatever. But really, what this one does is it allows the superintendent, the superintendent designates who is authorized to give prescription medication and non-prescription medication provided by a student's parents in accordance with administrative regulations. Okay? And so those regulations are very, are outlined, right? It has to be in the bottle. It has to, right? We can't go out and buy aspirin and give it, and give it to the students. So that's what that policy does. And GKA Local, Community Relations, Conduct on School Premises, specifies a person filing a complaint regarding refusal or rejection from school property based on Education Code 37.105, which is the Student Code of Conduct, shall be permitted to address the board within 90 calendar days. It did just say 90 days unless the complaint is resolved beforehand. I'm asking the board to approve the update 116 as presented. Does the board have questions on, on, on the update as presented?
I actually do have one, and I'm sorry I didn't contact you this previously, but FFAC Local, there's a lot of things that it doesn't do anymore. And I'm curious how we would handle that. One is procedures shall be established by the administration to ensure that proper attention is given to any student who becomes ill. Second is emergency procedures shall be established by the administration to ensure proper attention to any student injured at school. So it's, it's removing those as a requirement in policy.
Well, we have regulations on what happens through our nursing.
So that's in?
Administrative, correct.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll have regulations through our nursing process.
Okay. So it worries me. I think sometimes Tasby writes these and then they decide they want to rewrite them. And then next thing you know, because somebody put that in there at some point in time.
At some point in time, they did.
Okay.
They did.
And I think it's a good idea, too. So if you tell me we've got procedures and policies.
We will have procedures and policies and all that in place, yes.
Thank you.
It won't be policies because this is policy.
That's right.
We'll have administrative regulations.
Okay, thank you. I feel good. I feel better. Other questions or comments? Thanks, Ms. Holland, for your patience and for presenting this to us. Any move that we approve, the policies as recommended by Tasby Policy Service in accordance with, accordance with the localized policy manual update 116. Do we have any, a second? So we have a motion for Mr. Lehman, a second for Mr. Dindal. Any further questions or comments? Any public comment? If not, all in favor of our motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Our next item is the board's going to go into closed session to review superintendent evaluation, contract, and salary. We're able to do that under Texas Government Code 551074. This has to do with personnel matters. So all evaluations and other things that we do considering the superintendent's contracts are done confidentially. So we'll move to that. I'm going to call our meeting back to order and we didn't, I didn't make any announcements before we left, but we do have our announcements as part of our agenda. It says Finance and Prejudice Board Workshop is March 22nd. And our regular board meeting is March 29th. Both those are a little bit later than normal because of spring break. So that's the 22nd and the 29th of March. And then I'll need to get with Max or somebody. I'm going to be gone, I think, in April, but I'll visit with, I think, our regular board meeting. I'm going to be gone in April if it's the 19th, I think. But I'll get with Becky and then we'll work that out. We, normally I come back and say we didn't take any official action in closed session, but we actually did. I appreciate everybody's patience. I'm really pleased with our board team because when it comes to doing an evaluation, I think we all take it real seriously. You know, it's something that we think's important. We think it's a great opportunity for us to collectively to talk about how our district's doing. It's, it's an opportunity for us to ask a lot of questions throughout this process that helps us be a little bit better educated about what's going on in the district. You know, there's so much going on and we're, I would insist that there's a lot of boards that get in the weeds and try to interfere with what's going on in the district. And I'm, I'm pretty pleased that we don't do that. And so there's occasions, especially when it comes to an evaluation of our only true employee, which is Dr. Detloff, we have a great opportunity for us to learn more about what's going on in the district through this evaluation. So I know Carl's depending upon a number of members of his cabinet to help him with answering questions. And some of those questions might seem real elementary to you guys, but I think it's really important to us as a, as a team of eight, Carl and us, to work to make sure that we are, we're doing what I think is the most important of our, a part of our job, and that's being a strong advocate for the school district. And in order for us to be a strong advocate for the school district, we have to be well-informed. And this allows us to do that. So thank you all for doing that, everybody in the room and others that have participated. And certainly thanks to Dr. Detloff for his patience throughout the process. What, Dr. Detloff's on a three-year contract, we're, I'm going to make a motion that we increase, add another year to that contract, which is traditionally what we've done. And also what we've done traditionally is, as far as his salaries concerned, is that we, and this is, would be the second part of my motion, is for us to give him a raise that's commensurate with that, that other administrative, senior administrative team members get when we make that decision regarding salaries at a later date. So at that point in time, we'll make, which needs to be a third part of my motion, we'll make that retroactive to this meeting. So he, his salary will be, his salary will increase, but we don't know how much it will increase until we have a recommendation on salaries. That's my motion. So we have a motion and a second.
Second.
From Mr. Parker. Other questions or comments from our board team? Again, I'm, I'm really, really happy to be able to serve in the capacity that I've been elected to serve in. And I can't imagine doing it with a team that's different than our board team. And I'm not sure I could do it with a team of dedicated professionals any better than those that we get to work with on a day-to-day basis. So thank you all. Other comments or questions?
Mr. Lehman certainly just said interesting.
Just an interesting year with the pandemic and all of the situations that have come up. But if, for a district, you know, it's hard to turn a ship in a, in a tight circle. But for a district to be as nimble as this district has been to manage some of the chaos that's gone in the past 12 months has been amazing for me to see because sometimes it's hard to get that, those processes turned and processes in place to continue to be functional and to serve our most important assets, our kids.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Dindal. That certainly makes, I thank you for saying that. And I can't tell you how many people I run into on a regular basis that thank the district for having our kids in school, you know? So, so again, efforts, kudos to all of our administrative team and to Dr. Detloff and his leadership. So we have a motion and a second. Board comment I've asked for. I don't see a lot of public wishing to make any comment. We, so I'll call the motion. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Our motion passes. And Becky, I'll get with you and work further through our evaluation document. So it really looks like an evaluation document rather than, so we, I've got a lot of notes and I want to make sure that I've captured in my notes everything that the board wanted put in my notes. And so I'll work on that and then I'll send it out to them, making sure that all those comments are, capture our collective thoughts. And then we'll turn it over to Carlos's evaluation. Okay? All right. Is that all right, Dr. Detloff?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. So I don't think we have any other board business. Anybody have anything that we need to put on our future agenda? Thanks, Dr. Ritter, for bringing John in, Tanner. I think that's a big help to our board and something that we really want to work on as a district is, is making sure that we do a great job of the community understanding what community-based accounting, accountability system is and us as collectively as a team building a model that, that makes, makes it easy for us to advocate for the district. So thanks. And with that being said, we'll stand adjourned.